Recording in progress.
All right, I'm going to call the Thursday, May 15th Business Meeting of Norbert Borough Council to order. Mayor Dorst, you have a minute to make the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Starts with a color.
Absolutely. All right. Council President Bush.
Here.
Vice President Rickards. Uh, here. Councilmember Winston.
Here.
Councilmember Burrow.
Here.
Councilmember Spear.
Here.
Councilmember Gardini.
Here.
Councilmember Salmonson.
Here.
And Mayor Andrew Deutsch.
Here.
There you go.
Few comments today. I've been disturbed at some of the tenor of the conversation that's been going on online about council members, council issues. There's been a lot of false information that's been spreading around about council actions, what council's up to. There have been personal attacks on various members of council and on, not just us, but on our staff, on our borough manager, and I find that really inappropriate. We are transparent about what we do. We post our agendas. We have our videos of all of our meetings online. You can easily see what we are considering, what we're doing, and our boards and committees are the same. All of the agendas are posted, all of the meetings are public, all of the videos and the meetings are posted. It's really easy to see what we're actually up to, and I would just encourage people who are watching online to, if you see something that looks, that, if something seems wrong, take the time to look it up, take the time to make sure that the information that you're seeing is accurate, that we really are talking about whatever it is that the hubbub is about, because lately it's just gotten out of control, some of the personal attacks and the misinformation. So, we do our best to put information that's of public interest on the Borough website. In fact, we're doing a website redesign right now that'll make it easier for you to see key information about what we're up to, and otherwise, I encourage you to look at minutes, look at videos, look at whatever before becoming outraged at what we're up to. We are, we are out here as volunteers for the good of the community, and that is, that is all of our collective goal here, is to keep the borough running smoothly and to make it a great place to live. Mayor Deutsch.
Thank you, Fred. I just, I want to say, we're all sitting here as a labor of love. We, we all love the community, and we do, nobody here is getting paid the big bucks, and, and it's a labor of love. We're your friends, we're your neighbors. We are, we are here working hard to try and do what we think is right for the borough, and if you think it's wrong, have a discussion with us, and have a discussion, have a coffee with somebody from, from, this is sitting at the table, and let them know your thoughts, and see if we can talk it out. In police news, as mayor, good news, we are going to see a brand-new police vehicle start as of today. We have a brand-new 2024 Chevy Blazer electric vehicle that hit the streets today. So, it's a pretty neat vehicle, and I, I think we should probably set up an open house so everybody can come down and check it out. And it looks great, and it, it, it looks like a fine vehicle to serve the borough. Second thing on the agenda, you may have seen, just a reminder that when school lets out, the buses for the Lower Marine School District will be retrofitted with cameras so that, starting in the fall, if you pass a, a, a school bus with its arms out and lights on, you will, you're subject to having a picture taken of your vehicle, and that is, goes through a process, and you will get a $300 fine. So, we do not want people passing school buses. It's dangerous for our kids, it's dangerous for everybody. Let's just slow down, respect the, the signs on the buses, and if you don't, you're subject to getting a big fat fine. And you can answer to the judge if you want, as to why you had to go so fast. And that is it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Stoss, you have a report.
Yes. So, this was one of those months where I know we did a lot, but I couldn't even tell you where the time went. So, some of the key things, as President Bush mentioned, we are working on our, our website redesign, so that's coming along nicely, and I anticipate that we'll have that live very soon, in the next couple of months. Otherwise, it's just been a lot of maintenance and ongoing efforts just to kind of do the, the boring small stuff that doesn't really get seen by the public, but really helps us with our policies and processes internally, just to kind of keep things running smoothly and address any kind of questions before they arise, just internally processing with our administration, permit application form updates, things like that. I did want to also update you that, as authorized last month to execute on the energy contract, we were able to secure and lock in a price that our contract agreed was advantageous, so we did go ahead and lock that in for the 12, we did a 12-month, January 1, 2026, to the end of December 31, 2026, at the rate, so I do have that contract available if you would like to see it. And then, otherwise, we do have a zoning hearing board coming up on next week, May 28th at 7:00 PM, for a special exception, excuse me, for the address at 201 Woodside, if anyone is interested at all in, in attending that. And our ZHB solicitor, also our NIDA solicitor, Fred Lenz, is retiring at the end of the month, so we have some CVs in, and we're going to be scheduling some interviews with some replacement ZHB solicitors in the next week or two, and as a reminder, the ZHB appoints their own solicitor, so you'll see the fee schedule of who they select on council meeting for June. Those are the big things.
Okay. Let's go ahead with public comment. As a reminder, it's only three minutes, and please begin by giving your name and where you live. So, let's start with folks in the room, in the first row, in the second row, would you like to make public comment? Okay, Lee, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I'm.
Do you want to stand up and give your name and address?
Lee Hawkinson, 201 Way Avenue. I'm hopeful that the website redesign will help a lot, transparency, I've just been frustrated, and, and if, if you're able to click and, you know, have, have the agenda, for example, pop up rather than have to find, it'll just be a game there, and I think that'll, it'll help more people that are involved, so, you know, I'm excited for that. That's all.
Sure. If you want to share any suggestions, Mike?
Yeah.
And Emily? Mike, okay. You can email.
Yeah, just email me, I can actually show you. I would love to get your input on making it more consumer-friendly. We've, we've been dealing a lot with the folks who do that. I think it's going to be much more easy to navigate, and just, I think you'll be happy.
Okay.
But I would love to let you be, you know, sort of first look when we get, when we get to that point. We're not there yet.
Yeah, we're still a couple months out, I think. So, all right. Any further public comment in the room? Okay. We'll move on, online. Carol Murray, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, I do. Carol Murray Scanlon, Sabine Avenue. I would like to ask if the meeting agendas can come out more than one day before the meeting. It can be quite challenging to become educated on the issues with such a short timeframe. In the past, they've come out several days beforehand, but it seems to be a shorter and shorter time, in the recent past, to become educated on the issues. And I would also like to ask what the status update is on the assessment appraisal for the Sabine Park site of 201 Sabine. Has it gone out yet, and has it been returned?
Do you have any further public comment, Carol?
Go ahead. Up to you now. Pass it to you.
Okay. So, do you want to talk about the agendas we are working on now?
Yes. When did we post this one?
FNI and this council manager posted on Monday.
On Monday, okay. So, this, this month's agendas were posted on Monday, and if they haven't been posted, it's because we've been making some changes to them. Under Sunshine Act, we legally have to post them 24 hours ahead of time. I certainly hear your comment about wanting to have them more ahead of time, so that is our goal as well, is to have them posted by Monday, but sometimes, there are some things that come up, so the, excuse me, the agendas get taken down to be updated, to then be reposted, because we have things that come up last minute that need to go on the agenda, but I do hear what you're saying, and we will continue to strive towards posting them on Monday.
Thank you.
And the borough has taken no further action on 201 Sabine on having.
So, the assessment or appraisal hasn't got out yet?
Uh, no, we are pausing on that at the moment. There has been no action taken.
And maybe it's clarified, we, we haven't retained an appraiser, so there's, there's been no agreement, there isn't anything moving forward to even start that process.
That is correct. We are, we are.
So, has the whole project been tabled?
We are not moving forward with it at this time. We are awaiting some information from someone who is interested in acquiring the 201 Sabine property. It has been discussed several times before. We are waiting to get more information from them on their interest in the property before we proceed with other plans.
Now, their interest is in the school.
Obviously not including the, the park.
Yeah, not.
It's not the park, it's the school.
This is someone who wants to purchase the school property, has expressed interest in purchasing the current school property, for use as a school, a private school, so it would, it would, it would look very similar to the current use. We are waiting to hear more from them before we proceed with other plans, and once we hear more from them, we will make that public. But right now, we have no more information to share, and we are not proceeding with the assessment at this time. Thank you, Carol Murray. Is there any further public comment?
Yes, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Or question, really. Hi, my name's Kyle Mattis. I live at 114 Forest Avenue. The building is called The Elm. It's an apartment building in the borough here, and I was invited or recommended to come in. You guys are doing a great job, by the way, so thank you. I was recommended to come to the meeting by a gentleman named Paul. I do not know how to pronounce his last name, but he works at the borough. His title is Norbert Borough Parking Controller. So, I recently inherited a vehicle from a deceased family member from their estate, and as you may or may not be aware, the Elm is in a metered parking zone area, right? There, there are meters on every side of the street, you know, outside the Elm, and I requested a parking pass from the borough, and I was told that I was ineligible for one. Paul told me to come here and voice this issue, or whatever you, whatever the right verbiage is for this. I believe I should be eligible for a parking pass. I'm surrounded by metered parking, and I'm in 100% residential building, like, this is not, I'm not here for commercial reasons. Basically, request waiver or something to get a parking pass for the, the vehicle.
Well, we don't, so the, the metered zones, the residents who live there do not have, like, a, a way out of the meters. There's no parking permit that allows you to not pay a meter if you're living in a metered zone. Like, if you're living in the apartments on Haverford, you know, you have to figure out your own parking. There's no, there's no permit that will, that will allow you to not pay a meter, or not pay for some sort of private garage. I mean, I know the Elm has its own parking, so we would, you know, we expect residents of the Elm to be using the Elm's parking lot.
Is this for daily use parking, or long-term storage with the car?
Uh, I'm actually probably going to be terminated, like, you know, moving out at the end of the lease, so this is kind of just temporary in the sense of, until I sell my, one of the vehicles, I'm only going to be keeping one, but it's like, I need somewhere to park it, and he did, you know, Paul did recommend a certain streets that were, I was eligible to park on, but it's just like, I, I don't know the name of it, but the closest street to me that I can think of walking out of the back of the Elm is, you know, it's, I think you need some sort of pass on the dashboard or something for, you have to buy each year, and I, you know, I asked to buy one of those, and he said, oh, you know, you're not eligible per your building.
Right. So, we do, we have rules to allow long-term use of the borough parking lots, at least the Sabine lot, I believe. You can, you can pay for a permit to park long-term in the Sabine lot, so if you're not going to be using the car, and you don't mind it being outside, that's, that might be your best option, is to get long-term, a long-term permit for use of the Sabine lot. Otherwise, yeah, I don't think we, the borough doesn't have anything. There are some places that'll rent you garages, I mean, you can look, is it on Essex or Forest? Is that place? Anyway, I believe we do have a provision for long-term use of the Sabine lot, so I would recommend that to you, but otherwise, yeah, you're not going to be eligible for
Residential.
A residential permit. That's only for residents on certain streets which have two-hour parking, not permit parking, not, not metered parking, I'm sorry. So, I'd encourage you to come in and ask about the, the, the long-term Sabine parking, if that works for you. All right, thanks. Is there anybody else who wishes to make public comment online? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda items A through C.
On second.
Okay. Any discussion of the consent agenda? All right, we are voting on the consent agenda items A through C. All those in favor? We're voting, are we?
He's voting no on consent.
Okay. Let's move on to the.
Heads in route.
Okay, heads in route. We'll postpone item 9A, so I will take a motion for 10A, which is resignation, somebody who's in the room.
I don't think I can move my own.
Yeah, somebody else want to?
I'll move, I'll move the Borough Council to accept the resignation of Michael Salmonson from the Civic, Civil Service Commission.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Under the Borough Code, a member of the council is allowed to serve on the Civil Service Commission, but I always think it's a little bit odd to do that, I know Cindy previously served. I can't remember how many, many years I served on the commission. I started as an alternate, became a member, ended up as chair. During that time period, we rewrote the code to bring it up to the 21st century, I would say, and we were responsible for hiring two police officers and the promotion of Sergeant Renault. So, I'm really proud of the work that I did and my fellow commissioners did on the mission, and I know I have a great replacement, so with that, I'd like to submit my resignation, and that will create an opening.
All right. Thank you for your service.
Got me here.
Any discussion? All right, let's go to the accept, Mike's resignation from the Civil Service Commission. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Now can Mike make the motion?
Yes, I would like to make this motion. I would like to move that Borough Council appoint Douglas Rosenblatt to the Civil Service Commission to fill the existing agent vacancy which just occurred, with a term to end on December 31, 2028, essentially, filling my unexpired term.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
I will just tell you that Doug and I, Doug is a former Assistant District Attorney for Onomari County, and I think it's good to have a former, someone involved in law enforcement on the Civil Service Commission. Doug and I were actually opposing counsel on what I would consider to be a fairly contentious case several years ago, and I, we, you know, respected his professionalism despite the fact that our clients maybe acted less so, and so, I would like to highly recommend his appointment.
Okay. Discussion?
Second.
That's it?
Is there a second?
Well, that's.
I'm seconded.
Yes, it's been seconded, so we're, we're ready for about here. All right, let's vote to appoint Mr. Rosenblatt to the Civil Service Commission. All those in favor? Congratulations, Mr. Rosenblatt.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you want to step forward, the mayor can administer your.
I have the honor of administering the, I have a Constitution or a Bible, which, which would you prefer?
Constitution.
Okay. All right, let's go.
I said lawyers always pick the Constitution.
Why not?
All right. So, please put your left hand in the Constitution and raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
Douglas Rosenblatt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support, obey, and defend.
I support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
10C, Rhodes.
Move that Borough Council approve the bid received by Rhodes Con, and the amount of, and not to exceed 13,300.
Nope, nope, 10C.
Wait, what?
Oh, sorry, you're, you're off one. Yeah, you want to go?
Okay, so I move that Borough Council approve the bid received by Innovative Construction Services, Inc., in the amount of, and not to exceed $293,451.35 for the 2025 Rhodes Program, continue on their execution of the contract and supply of required bonds and insurance.
A second. All right. I'm just going to take this one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take this. So, these were received on May 6th. We had six bids in total that were received for those projects. Like you said, the little bid came in at right around $293,000, and that includes all the add alternates, which were a few curbrants and a couple speed pumps. So, we budgeted a little under $350,000 for this, so we came in about 15% over budget, which is great. The contractor is the same contractor that we had last year, so we worked really well with them, so we're, we're excited that, that they got the bid this year as well. Looking at the rest of the timeline, we're planning on awarding the project today. After that, we'll, we'll need to get the contract signed by the borough and by the contractor, and we'll also need to submit documents to PNDOT for, for liquid fuel response, which is pretty standard for, for these program projects. Just to reiterate the list of roads I would be paving briefly, we're going to be paving Meeting House Lane, 3 Main Ave, and sections of Iona, Windsor, Hampton, and Haverford. We have seven ADA ramps, three on Windsor, three on Iona, and one on Haverford, and three speed pumps, two on Meeting House, and one on Iona. So, that's, that's about it. If you guys have any questions, I can answer.
Do we need to make any decisions about the add alternates here, or?
Uh, we, we recommended that, that we approve all the add alternates, so if you, if you do not want to approve all of them, then.
This would be the time, yeah.
So, sorry, the Meeting House pumps are new, and are we still testing them out to some extent to see whether we like them and they're in the right place?
Yeah, so the, the speed homes on Meeting House are temporary right now, so the plan is to, is to place permanent speed homes on there.
Do we have to make that decision now if we're, if we're putting them into the, as add alternates?
I think the decision, I think you do, we'll, we'll need to make the decision on whether or not you want to do that, or whether or not you want to approve it, and then later on, you know, we could probably make some type of change or sort of contract to, you know, to, to remove it from the contract if we, you know.
We need to.
We need to in the future.
Do we, do we have any, anything now, any complaints from residents, any significant complaints from residents about the, the current speed homes? Okay.
Somebody on Facebook complained that.
Yeah.
They made it slow down. Hmm, that's the point.
Right? That means their work.
That means their work.
I will say, we have received comments, both in favor and against the speed pumps. People say they have to slow down too much, but then we've also gotten people coming in to say thank you for slowing the traffic down, so it goes both ways. I think unless the fire department says this is a problem, we should probably move on, right? And they did review this and have provided feedback that, that it is, yes, they do need to slow down, but it's not going to hinder any sort of emergency services. Then we're good.
Certainly I had no problem with the ADA ramps. Those are, an unfunded obligation on our part, we have to.
I just wrote that what part of Haverford are, is planned, be done?
It's, uh, Haverford is in between Norbert and Iona.
Between Norbert and.
Well, it's a long.
Okay, so outside of the business district.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, we haven't tried that one out with a speed on that, other than temporary. That would be a.
On Haverford?
Yeah.
No, I don't believe we've.
But there was a recommendation, the Public Safety Committee recommended that, or?
Not on Haverford.
So, where, where did the Haverford speed bump come from?
This is about, she was asking about the Rhodes program.
Oh, Rhodes program, not a speed bump.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The speed bumps are on.
I was just asking about paving.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, so the section that we're paving on Haverford.
Okay, sorry, misunderstood your question.
Not, no, there's no speed pumps, or speed bumps, or cushions.
Okay.
Proposed on Haverford.
All right, I apologize for.
Sorry, didn't mean to compete.
All right. Any other questions, comments from somebody other than me? Or, okay. So, let's go to approve the 2025 Rhodes Program bid award. All those in favor? Okay. All right. Mr. Ridgway has arrived. Shall we move on to his presentation item? Are you able to? Ed, are you good to go here?
Yeah, sure. Sorry, I was late. Do you guys have any idea how far they just get here at 7:00 o'clock on a weeknight?
You're gonna like the next agenda, I know.
Yeah.
So, I, I just wanted to come and, and talk to you guys, because I know, you know, we're, you know, we're facing some, you know, some challenges in the downtown that you guys are talking about, and, you know, we're talking about it as a business community too, so I just thought, you know, I'd come and talk to you about, like, where we are and the ideas that, that we're having, and, you know, things that we're working on, and, you know, by no means do we think we've got it all figured out, but, you know, it's something that, you know, we're talking about and listening to our members, and, you know, what are their, what are their issues, and what things they want to do, so I just wrote down a couple notes. And first, I, I just wrote down, I want to say thanks to, thanks to all of you, to the borough staff and to the Borough Council for, you know, the support that you always do give to the business community, because it, it's not a given, you know, I, I've talked to a lot of different, like, business associations and versions of business associations in different towns along the main line, and, you know, not everybody gets the support that, that we do, and, you know, what I always tell people when they ask us, you know, much bigger municipalities than us, and they ask us, you know, how do we do all the things that we do, well, one of the things that I tell them is, you know, the advantage that we have is that our borough always tries to help us get things done instead of getting in our way and trying to tell us why we can't do it. So, like, I appreciate that, and, you know, I appreciate that, the work that all of you do. I know that, you know, unhappy voices are always the loudest ones, and, you know, you hear it all the time, but, you know, you know, you're seen, we see you, and I just wanted to say thanks. So, our business community is really a lot of different types of businesses. We've got, you know, medical offices and business professionals like accountants and real estate agents, and, but most of them are, you know, restaurants and retail in both of our business districts, the, you know, Montgomery Avenue District and our main downtown district, and so we always try to include, when we do our events and activities, we always try and figure out ways that everybody can. and figure out ways that everybody can participate, even if they're not in the downtown. But physically, most of the things that we do, you know, in the, I don't know what you want to call it, the, the Pat Daly era forward for the Norbert Business Association has basically, our economic development has mostly consisted of having events and activities right in the downtown and centering our events in the downtown as opposed to elsewhere in the borough. So that people come into the downtown, the idea being that they, you know, they see their favorite businesses and are reminded how much they love them, and they see new businesses that they didn't know about and try them for the first time. And, you know, you guys probably know that, but I mean, I just want to kind of reiterate where, you know, where we are and what we're doing and what our goal is. So the, some of the biggest challenges right now are very obvious, and I'm not telling you anything that you don't know. Our downtown is really going through a transition period, and it happens, you know? Downtowns are liquid things, you know, they're always changing. But, you know, we're in a period where we're going to be changing a lot over the next couple of years, and we're already seeing it. We're already seeing some of the stressors of being, you know, being in this transition and having, particularly having so many closed businesses on the south side of Haverford Avenue. And we don't know why that is, we don't know why it is, but until that situation turns around, what we're seeing, one of the big problems we're seeing is a lack of foot traffic in the downtown. And that's when, you know, when I talk to the membership, that's the, you know, the number one, you know, complaint that I hear is there's just not enough people on the street, there's fewer people on the street. And some of the things, some of the reasons for that are, you know, out of our control. You know, a changing economy has made it so that we don't have as many of those businesses that you, you know, visit every day. We don't have a grocery store, a convenience store, a hardware store. We don't have those things. And that's, you know, that's life in 2025, you know, when Jed wanted to retire from Bricklands, you know, there wasn't a line of people who had the skill set and the inclination to run a hardware store. You know, it's just, it's very different now with the brick and mortar economy. You just need way more people to support a store like that when, you know, when the budgets of our local residents are, you know, split between, you know, not only the brick and mortar stores, but all the online opportunities, the big box stores, Home Depot and Target. So, you know, that's one of the reasons why there's less foot traffic. But another reason is just there's so many businesses are closed right now. And, you know, as a business community, there's not much we can do to speed up a construction project. So, you know, we're talking about what else can we do and how can we support the businesses? Because, you know, one of my goals is to make sure that when we emerge from this on the other side, and the bridge project is behind us and the Haverford Avenue, you know, restorations and building replacements, once that's all done, I would like to see some of our existing businesses survive and still be here. You know, like, I want to get through this and still have, you know, Coco Ty and the bookstore and Sweet Maple and The Greeks, you know, all in a row there, you know? So, you know, so anyway, foot traffic is one of the things that we talk about a lot and we want to, you know, continue to remind the community to support this as much as we can, always, but especially right now. The other thing which you may be less familiar with, or maybe you do know, is that at the same time, simultaneously with the lack of foot traffic, rents are going up for many of our people. And, you know, and it's having a, you know, real tangible effect. I know of at least one business that is going to be out of town three years sooner than they planned because the rent just went up so much. And, you know, the rent is going up at the exact same time that the foot traffic is down, so, you know, paradoxically, it's like tough for, it's tough for our businesses, many of them, to survive big rent increases like that, you know, when, you know, when they're facing those challenges. The, many of our local businesses are not big businesses, you know, they're mom and pop shops or, you know, and they're, as Danny Gold would call it, they're passion projects. You know, like Ellen didn't open a bookstore to become a millionaire. She opened a bookstore because she loves books and wants to run a bookstore, you know, and same thing with many. You look around and you see, you know, some of our businesses, and they are, you know, they're a passion project that we love and, you know, we're thrilled to have. And, you know, and so one of our goals as a business association is to try and, you know, keep business up in a challenging period. So we talked about a number of things, and, you know, I'm willing to hear your ideas, and I've already talked to some of you and, you know, plan to talk to you guys some more. Want to hear what your ideas are. And we kicked around some different things. We talked about things like, you know, should, is it, is it important for the Borough to use some kind of retail recruitment? You know, in theory, you know, if we could find like a commission-based person to handle a project like that, I just don't know if this is the time for it. You know, it's like, we're not really at our peak attractiveness right now in terms of like, you know, the businesses that we want. I don't know if like 2025 is going to be the year that they want to come to, they want to come to Norbert. I don't know, I might be wrong about that, but, you know, and I'm willing to talk about that. Another thing we talked about is like some kind of a Main Street manager, like some kind of capacity of a Main Street manager. You know, we haven't seen a model that we're really attracted to for that. And maybe there are ways to do it, you know, I've seen some where there's a creation of a business improvement district. The ones I've seen are largely funded by some kind of tax on the businesses, and, you know, we're at the point where the businesses need support. I mean, there's, could be no enthusiasm to a, you know, a business tax-supported entity. Not right now, there isn't. So, you know, you know, I guess maybe I have more questions than answers. A couple of things that we have talked about that we want to do. One of the things is we want to have a few more nighttime events that are not specifically kid-focused. One of the, some of the feedback that we've gotten from our members, and, you know, two things come to mind. One is some of the First Fridays, like we always have a big First Friday in May, and if any of you went to that, I mean, if you look around, I mean, it was great to see the downtown, it was buzzing, it was hopping. And, you know, some more of those. And so, starting with First Friday, probably, we'll try to make First Friday maybe, you know, maybe not 12 months a year, but more of those big First Fridays with music and, you know, specific activities happen in the Borough. And another one was kind of an accidental one when we did in 2023, when I had to cancel the Dickens Festival because of the weather. I kind of hastily threw together what we called a night market, where since we had these vendors who weren't going to be able to come to the Dickens Festival, I said, comment, it was like, it was like a Thursday night, and we just set the vendors up in Station Circle, everybody with Christmas lights on, and it turned out to be like a really good night, you know, it was like, and if we could throw something together that brought that many people to town, you know, something that, you know, we just put together in a couple of days, I think those kinds of things. And so, you know, one of the things that I want to talk to you as a council and the Borough staff about is, you know, how can we, you know, how can we sometimes, you know, have these nighttime events? You know, should we close Station Circle? Is it ever appropriate to close Haverford Avenue? Right now, we close Haverford Avenue for the Dickens Festival and for two, for the Dickens Festival, for two music festivals, and those are all Sunday afternoons. So it's kind of low impact to close on a Sunday afternoon. We close it for an hour on, yeah, for the Halloween Parade, it gets closed for, you know, the Norbert Run, but like, we don't really close it very often, but sometimes is it appropriate to do? You know, I think sometimes it would be, but, you know, I always come at our events as trying to be as, you know, use as little resources as we possibly can. So, you know, I'm not looking to, you know, get overtime for the, you know, for the already, you know, already burdened police budget. Like, I don't want to be adding overtime. I don't want Jeff and the public works guys to have to be, you know, spending off business hours. So, you know, I want to look for ways that we can possibly do it because, believe me, people really like it. I closed the street for an Oktoberfest, and I'm talking about Haverford Avenue now. It's easy for us to close Forest Avenue, and it's pretty easier for us to close Station Circle, but to close Haverford Avenue in Norbert is just a logistical challenge. I mean, how do you get from east to west of Norbert if, you know, you close Haverford Avenue? You know what I mean? With the bridge down and, you know, you gotta, you know, you can go through the parking lot behind Haverford Avenue there, but that's not an ideal solution to be sending traffic through parking lots. I don't want to mean to get so in-depth into that, but, anyway, so the idea of what we were talking about is to do more nighttime events like a First Friday, maybe turn Dickens Festival into more of a weekend where there's a night market on Friday night or something on Saturday, and then the event itself is on Sunday. Because, you know, holiday events are super popular and people are looking to spend money. And maybe bring in some food trucks. Anytime, anytime I bring in food trucks or talk about bringing in outside businesses, you know, it's always in conjunction and talking to the local restaurants, you know. As a business association, we're always looking to do things that are business-friendly and not hurt business. But, I mean, we've talked to them, you know, like Drew Johnson at The Greeks, we talked to him about bringing in a specialty food truck, and, you know, he's fine with that. So anyway, but food trucks are, you know, just kind of like a, kind of an easy way to add something fun to a nighttime event. You guys have already been very supportive of the, of the Norbert Public Art Project. That's really, you know, working with Emily has really been helpful for us, and I think, you know, her efforts really show in the downtown, making, you know, making a storefront look attractive that's completely empty behind the window. And one thing that we haven't done, it's not just a discussion, but we have already done, we've recently hired a social media marketing person, not a huge budget, you know, a modest budget to, you know, on a, for the next three months, we'll see how it goes, we'll work with her and see. But, you know, she's got some good ideas, and I used to be doing, you know, when I was a marketing consultant, I had, I was just much more in tune with it and had the time to do that kind of stuff. And it's just not getting done well now, and I think, you know, the biggest thing about social media is just, you know, it's education for people, it's a reminder about our events and about our downtown. So, you know, we're planning on doing things, not only having her, and she started to promote our events, but also to fill in with, you know, promoting individual businesses, just kind of as a reminder to the community. And, you know, the last thing up here, I had a note, I'm not sure where this goes, but one of the things, one of the projects that we talked about that maybe you guys can help us with is I really think we need some better education of the public as to what the parking situation is in the downtown. You know, where can people park? Where should people park? Where can't they park? You know, where are the long meters? Where are the short meters? That kind of thing. But anyway, that's, that's all I had. I just wanted to talk to you guys about like where we are and the things we're talking about. If you have anything you want to ask me now, or, you know, I like, I know Mike and I are going to get together for coffee, we already have, and, you know, and I talk to Cindy fairly regularly about this kind of stuff, but, you know, I'm very, I'm very easy to hold up. So anybody wants, anybody wants to talk to me either now or in the future, just let me know.
I appreciate the shout-out too. I believe we have $60,000 in the budget to the NVA and Narv Art, and that doesn't ever, we haven't really ever calculated in kind, police, public works, I mean, that's all stuff that's absorbed in that budget. So I appreciate you kind of acknowledging that we try to do as much as possible. And as far as 230 Haverford, I mean, we're using every legal tool we have to move that along, right? Because we understand that half of the block of downtown is being held hostage with construction. And I deeply appreciate Emily's work, and I'm thankful for all of us, it's good for the resources to be able to pay artists for their work, something, at least to be able to contribute to that. And support you all. We've talked about retail recruiters, that comes up all the time. I will say I had a conversation with Tim Rubin about that, who said, I can tell you, I have a fabulous broker, who has curated both Jenny's and Maluga. There's not, there's currently not vacancies in Norbert, it's just those spots where he said, I have someone who's going to curate shops, so kind of save your money, because you're going to hire a retail recruiter that's going to come to my broker that I'm already paying to find this. So I would be cautious on that investment until we see how that plays out, because I'm very happy with those two new stores personally. I am happy to hear, Ed, you can tell me if something has changed, that he has agreed to work in partnership with you all and Narv Art for when there is construction, that Narv Art will have kind of access to construction fencing, and he will make it as aesthetically pleasing as possible to get us through that 18 months or two years of construction downtown.
He hasn't said no to us yet in anything that we've asked.
I want to give a special thank you to Emily Stewart, who just poured her heart and soul into, into creating these fabulous facades in the stores. I specifically, I had someone specifically come in and said, I came in because of what I saw in your windows. And that was like, you know, direct input that it's bringing people, I see parents with kids looking in the window, it just makes me want to be there.
You know, Borough Council's support really made that happen this year. We, you know, her program is able to, you know, be much more robust than it was in the past because.
Emily is a treasure to this community, and just a great thank you to her, for her art, her efforts. Yeah, I'm one of the stores, so I hear you. I hear you, and I'm with you on, I can think of something.
All right, and I hear Ed asking us what our thoughts are about more closures of Haverford Avenue, which would be a significant.
One of the questions I had about that is the bus. Is it, I was always under the impression that that was a challenge to reroute the bus.
Well, the bus is, you know, is certainly a detail that we always had to consider, but it's always been the Borough calls Septon and tells them we're having an event and they divert it.
They're going to be diverted soon.
It's not a big issue in a couple of months.
At some point, the 44 bus is going to stop going through Norbert and just go along more down.
I will say that, you know, that event, the sort of, the thing we threw together for the Christmas market in 2023 in Station Circle felt really good, like unlike the Dickens Festival, because it was so compact, it actually like, you know, what did we do? We threw it together in 72, I mean, you threw it together in 72 hours, but I remember you called me, you know, it was like, can you get your singing group over there? You know, like, can we have a little entertainment? It actually was a really nice event.
The redneck old send-off too.
Yeah, yeah, and it was, you know, I would, I would certainly advocate in favor, especially, you know, part of what we're thinking about is making that more of a town square, town, you know, let's feed into that desire to some extent. I kind of, it doesn't require us closing off the streets, we already closed it for the, for the market. You know, if, if it's closed from 4:00 to 7:00 in the summer for the farmers' market, then you extend it from 7:00 to 9:30 for, I don't know, something outsider and whatever it might be, you know? We invite the businesses to set up pop-up stands there, you know, with a half-hour break in between after the farmers' market, seems to me. Or, I got that sort of blocked off in people's minds anyway, on Thursday afternoon, why not try it a couple of times over the summer?
Yeah, and I actually do think that, you know, like, to the question of Haverford Avenue, I mean, I would, I would be really supportive of having, of having events there. And I know that in the, because, you know, like, every so often, like, someone on the street says, hey, like, media does dining under the stars.
People say that all the time.
All the time. I've heard that a time or two.
Yeah.
But just, and I know that like the part of the concern has always been making sure that it gets done in a way that is supportive of the businesses and isn't blocking anyone out at time today or days of the week or that sort of thing. But certainly if it's, if it's something that actually will be able to drive foot traffic, like I, I think that there would be a high demand for that sort of thing. I'm personally very supportive.
I also think it would be beneficial to have something like that on the slower days, like instead of like a weekend. So like maybe a weekday that maybe the businesses might not normally get that kind of foot traffic, but to get that extra foot traffic in there.
I will say, I actually think of what did cross over on First Friday into a safety issue. Those, you could not move on those sidewalks and people were spilling out into the street. I mean, it was a fabulous thing.
So you're saying we should have closed Havreford?
Absolutely. I think we should have absolutely closed Havreford. And I, Gene, I like that idea that, you know, some of the businesses say, you think you're helping us, but you're not because now you're cutting off access to my business during hours. This is a conversation we've had so many times. But I do love that idea of being great of folks will go out on a Friday night, but maybe a Wednesday. You know, everyone loves a burger and a drink in the street that it might incentivize.
Right. And also, I mean, the shoppers who go to the stores on the weekends. Some of the stores might not appreciate the closure of the stores then, but like, I mean, of the street then. But on a weekday, when they might not see as much of that foot traffic, then they might appreciate that extra foot traffic then.
All right, so I'm hearing Bring's proposal. And I think we're, we're in favor of some of these ideas for driving more, bringing more people down town and some of these events. Maybe if we're doing another big First Friday, that might be a time to close Havreford. Or if we have another, you know, if we have another First Friday in the summer with extra muse and extra events.
What do you think? I mean, it's relatively easy to close Station Circle. It's pretty easy to close Forest Avenue. But really like our center of our town is like, what, right? Part of The Greeks, you know, like that's, you know, that's the epicenter, Sweet Maple Greeks-ish area. So it's like, if we can close that block, logistically, it's a pain in the butt. But is it worth it? You know? You know what? And it depends on the day, of course, and it also, you know, so, and then the time. If you closed it at five o'clock, that's a much more difficult thing than if you closed it at seven o'clock. Is seven o'clock too late? Probably is on a Wednesday. And it could be, you know, it could be something like a phased thing, you know? Like, so First Friday starts and until seven o'clock, the street is open. So everybody can get to the train station and the liquor store. But comes seven o'clock, boom, we close it off. And then it's closed for the rest of the night. And that kind of keeps the party going, you know, kind of keeps the event going, keeps, you know? And, you know, one thing leads to another, you know? The businesses will stay open longer if there's more, if people continue to, you know, come in. And it's not just, it's not just The Greeks and Kokotai, it's not just the restaurants. You know, Shift did like one of their best days of business ever at that night market in December of '23.
Jeff, are you here?
Yeah, I think this is a Jeff John String question.
You know, to physically shut Havreford, you know, that's easy. You know, it's a quick text message to my contacts that said that it's parking, you know, one, one, one truck at the traffic light and one truck down on that forest. You know, it just starts to get into, you know, the type of event, you know, the amount of alcohol, you know? If Chief wanted an additional officer on foot there or, you know, how it would play out. But, you know, it's a pretty low impact on my end, you know, to shut the road down, you know, for, you know, an impactful evening for that day.
Yeah, and the biggest logistical problem, I would say, is not physically putting a barrier there, but figuring out, you know, how do we get people, how do we not impede the, you know, all the traffic? You know, because any hour day, there's going to be some traffic. You just, you can pick, you can pick your spots. Like Friday at five o'clock would be a very difficult time. But I closed it for a little mini Oktoberfest we did on the street. I closed it at seven o'clock on a Saturday, six o'clock on a Saturday. And it was, it wasn't that burdensome. I think, I think we might have used the parking lot, might have used that detour.
We did.
All right, so I think we're, we're in support, you know? One of the First Fridays might be a good opportunity to do this. Otherwise, Bring's proposal and we'll hear it out. Anybody else want?
But I just, I just want to like, once again, thank Ed for everything he does.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
And give a shout out for the music fest, Unique. And Dog Ray.
And tag the dog. The dog is, the dog is, there's a Narb, his mother lives in Narburg. So I'm trying to get him to come and be our photographer.
Wednesday night concerts.
Yep.
Oh, thanks, guys.
Let's return to our consideration items. So 10D is the bridge bid.
Cindy, you share the honors.
It's the longest-serving council.
Okay, should I drag to cross my fingers or something? I move the Borough Council proof the bid received by Rodecon Inc. in the amount of and not to exceed 13, 316, 88 and 86 cents for the Narburg Avenue Bridge replacement.
That's for you second. Second is my gem. Okay.
You want me to steal this?
Yeah, please do.
So, you know, we have a five-week bidding time. You know, we have only eight. We have three bids and, like you said, Cindy, Rodecon, Rodecon will spit out 14.3 million. We're expecting to get a notice to proceed in early August. For the first several months after August, we're going to be focusing, the contractor is going to be focusing on utility coordination and updating Amtrak's catenary system. So there's not going to be, it's not going to look like a whole lot is happening those first, few, first several months. Then later on is when, is when the bridge will be demoed and then the new bridge will be constructed then after. We're coordinating with the Borough right now to, to have, to schedule a more comprehensive presentation from, from our bridge team to go over, you know, a more detailed scope, I guess, and to give, you guys and to give residents the opportunity to ask questions, things like that. So we're, we're working with Borough to schedule that. We're expecting it to be during one of the council working sessions. Uh, let's see. So as of right now, the, you know, the project is, is 100% federally, federal funded. No, no new news on whether, whether or not that's changed for our, at least. During, during construction, the Borough will be receiving invoices from the contractor. The way that the contract was set up was that so the Borough could request reimbursement from, request reimbursement through PennDOT to receive, to receive funds to then pay the contractor. So the Borough won't be, you know, won't be waiting for, or won't be out any money. They'll, they'll be receiving money from PennDOT to then pay the contractor. So that'll work out pretty well. There is a down payment that the Borough will, will get paid, which Paige and I can speak on that a little bit more. But it sounds like that the, that Borough will be reimbursed, you know, the full amount towards the end of, end of construction. Did you have anything to add on that piece still?
No, just if, if council recalls, we do have that pot of money. That was the, the sale of the parking lot. So that money has been sitting in reserve. That is our contribution. It is going to be returned back to us at the end of the project. So that money will be due in the next couple of weeks. So we'll be wiring that over and that'll lock us in for the project. So that is all taken care of, well, will be, but it is all teed up and ready to go.
Other things, I know this is another agenda item, but I'll just mention quick that we are also, the contract, Pinoni's contract for the bridge is expected to expire in 2027. We're expecting that the, that the construction is going to take about four years. And, you know, that's a rough estimate. So on the agenda is, is to extend, is to extend that contract until 2029. You know, we can talk more about that during that agenda item if that's more appropriate. But then, you know, beyond that, you know, I just want to say congrats on reaching this milestone. And, you know, we're happy to be part of this and, you know, we're happy to continue to be part of this. And, you know, looking forward, looking forward to construction.
And if I can just add for this, I've had a lot of conversations with Pinoni today about what we have coming up. So Tony, thank you for summarizing all of that. We were also kind of brainstorming some ways that we can continue to message the construction phasing to the community and trying to be as transparent as possible about this. So obviously with our new website that we'll have, that will be one of the kind of first items that's going to be constantly up on the top of the page, since that's going to be a lot of people's questions, I think. So as Tony was mentioning, the contractor is going to be working with PennDOT the next couple of weeks. Their notice to proceed is set in August. We are working then to get that contractor to come in to do a workshop with us. So we'll have a dedicated workshop day with our consultants, so with Pinoni, with TPD, who's going to be our construction management team, and with the contractor. We'll put it in the big room. We'll have a work session. They'll give a presentation. We'll invite the community and everyone can ask questions to understand what the scope of the work is, what the timeline is. So that'll happen sometime in August or later after that notice to proceed. Also, just kind of preemptive here, but just to let you know some of the ideas that I'm thinking about. So if you think of anything, also let me know. Again, in terms of messaging, like I said, we'll have our website. We'll have the kind of sequence of events. So Kelsey's great with doing design. So I was thinking that she could come up with a fun infographic to kind of help explain the process and periodic improvements along the way. That'll be posted on our socials, on our website. I was also thinking that we could maybe make a sign and post it with a QR code that'll take you to the website to see all the phases. Maybe try to make it as interactive as possible, just to be transparent. And we'll have that QR code stationed at all of our bulletin boards around town. So if you think of anything else that could be helpful in, in getting the message out about the phasing, the construction and any other kind of FAQs that people are going to be asking, you know, certainly, please feel free to let us know. We will be brainstorming that over the next couple of months as we get to this launch phase. And just for the, the public to understand as well, you know, the first year or so of this project is going to be, we're not going to see demolition on day one. So it's not going to be the big wrecking ball coming in, you know, August, August 8th when that notice to proceed hits. It's going to be a lot of staging. It's going to be a lot of setup. And it's going to be a lot of the utility disconnections. And as Tony was mentioning, all the catenary, so those are all the overhead wires. So there's a lot of kind of pre-work that needs to happen first. So it's not going to look like a lot of work is happening, but it's really critical setup work before the actual big, kind of, the, the big visuals when the bridge actually comes down.
Which is why I think it's so important for all of us to say, we are going to the primary source. We are directing folks to the office for information. You know, we're not doing it as council. So if, if information comes up on social media, all of it gets directed to the office who's sharing that information and those updates. And then Ed will schedule, I'll help you schedule the big town party, Bridge Demolition Day.
What happened to the poster boards that had the actual bridge?
The artwork?
Yeah, the artwork. I went to show it to somebody and I thought they were still there. Because it would be nice to put that in a window somewhere and be like, the bridge is coming.
Okay, I don't know. I can see if they still exist and we can, we can recruit them. We can also just create new ones, maybe talk with Emily and, and have some sort of window display.
Yeah, I think it would be nice to stick them in a window somewhere and, and, you know, like, coming, sort of soon coming to a, even near you, right?
Yeah.
Borough near you.
The only thing I would request is that come the day when we have a ribbon cutting for the opening of our brand new bridge, it has been a 15 to 16-year process that you invite all the members of council, everybody who's been part of the government. Oh, because it's been, it's been a, you know, a yeoman's task. And, and, and I think everybody should get the credit for.
Are you trying to say you want to keep your scissors?
I do. I want my scissors. I want to be in on that. And I've been sitting at this table for eight years.
Andrew, that's a really, really thoughtful suggestion. Thank you for meaning it.
And also keep in mind the, what we have talked about multiple times, the infrastructure committee, which is that the average time for a bridge project that crosses Amtrak right of way is 10 to 20 years. So we are going to end up being the average project, which is not good for all the infrastructure crossing Amtrak right of way.
Correct.
But it's good to keep in mind.
But the irony of the delay is it also saved the Borough millions of dollars. Because we, you know, the irony of getting the delay was that we got the infrastructure money to pay for the whole thing. You know, when I first came home, we were still talking about needing to get a bridge loan at some ridiculous rate that was going to cost us a couple of hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, I hope the members of the public appreciate that. Yeah, this has been ridiculous, but procrastination, actually financially worked hugely to our favor.
Our.
So could you just briefly explain the process for selecting the three people to bid? But you have to, you don't really have, you can't pick a higher bidder, right? Even if you picked a more qualified?
Yeah, we're all beginning to pick the low bid after we, after we vet them, you know, after we, we check their references, after we check, you know, previous projects that they've done, things like that. So, you know, we had, I don't remember if the bridge team had said that they had worked with, with the contractor on different projects in the past. But they, they at least, you know, they at least checked references and.
They appear to be like one of the bigger companies that does this in the area.
Okay, yeah.
And then the, the second question is, are we basing our time estimates on something that the contractor told us in their bid documents? Or is that still preliminary estimates from the, from the engineering team?
Yeah, still, those are estimates from the engineering team, yeah. We're going to be getting a more detailed schedule from the contractor come notice to proceed timeframe. So once we, once we get that, then we'll have, you know, a much better idea of what we, what we really expect.
I mean, not to be, not, not to be, you know, overly optimistic about it, but it's to their advantage to do it more quickly because they have to have people on site for the full duration of the project. And that, that costs a lot of money to keep the project, man. So there's still some hope that this, this date, we could move in either direction, but there's some hope that it might move in a better direction.
Anybody else have comments or questions? All right. We are voting on the bridge replacement bid award. All those in favor?
You'd like to put two hands up?
It is unanimous. Okay, and we look forward to further information and a public session in the big room in a few months. Okay, let's take a breath. You can't see any comactic from here, but changes to the employee handbook. Move the Borough Council, move the Borough Council proof the updates to the Narburg Borough Employee Manual as presented. But, well, there's some amendments to that, changes to that. Okay, why don't you state the amendments that you, that you are wishing to make? Do we need a second first or? Why don't you?
Oh, well, we need to fill in some blanks.
Okay, well, if we need to discuss it, let's, let's take a second to discuss. So get a second for discussion. Yeah, take a second to this.
No, second.
Second it over here. Okay.
So this is Alan put together original draft changes. I volunteered to, as an employment lawyer, put in my own two cents worth. So there were a couple of changes in the, in the pack. It has my comments and changes and Alan's with all the language. But there were a couple of things that you, we as a group had to decide. There's five things and we came up with our own recommendations and FNA. So I can just go through those real quickly. In section 2.3, this has to do with if there's a complaint of discrimination made, the complainant generally would report that to Maggie as the Borough manager. However, it's best practices and it makes sense that if the complaint somehow involved. that if the complaint somehow involves Maggie either they're claiming that Maggie didn't do anything about her or Maggie's the actual harasser, you need to have an alternative reporting structure, uh, somebody else to report to. I left that blank. I had recommended that it be you, Fred, as, or, well, it should be the president of council, council president, and that would be our recommendation to add, to fill in that blank. It's the alternative reporting person under section 2.3.
Let me, let me pause there. I'm not totally sure how I would resolve that. I mean, would I need to find a lawyer and discuss it with them?
So typically what would happen is you would ask somebody to do an outside investigation. Um, you know, we would either hire John to, or somebody in his office to do an investigation, or you would appoint somebody to do an investigation because obviously Maggie can't investigate herself.
Yeah, and I'm not the right person to do that.
So you can delegate that. But this is more about, you know, the employee has to have the ability to report to somebody that's not the bad doer or the, or they've said that they have complained.
Person they're accusing.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Uh, let's, let's, uh, let's maybe pause at each amendment and see if there's, I mean, so the idea, do anybody have concerns with if there's an employee who wishes to complain about the borough manager, the complaint should go to the council president? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the next one is that we took out, um, these, um, post-job offer medical exam. Um, but embedded in that was, um, something dating from COVID that said all new hires would be required to provide proof that they are fully vaccinated for COVID-19 per the CDC definition of fully vaccinated. We're, we're taking that out. It's moved, but I suggested, um, that we should put in a generic provision that says the borough reserves the right to require appropriate vaccinations based on future endemic or pandemic conditions or when it deems such vaccines are otherwise advisable or necessary as a matter of public health and safety. And the reason why I want to put that in here is because there's been, through all that COVID, um, litigation, there's been a lot of litigation over mandatory vaccines, et cetera, and whether, you know, you were properly provided notice. So I wanted to reserve the right for us to be flexible to put it in, especially if we're in a pandemic situation where we want to act quickly that public health and safety could vote. We could vote. We don't have to amend the handbook specifically as a separate step to get that accomplished. And that's kind of consistent with what companies are doing post-COVID is they're reserving the right for future situations.
Would this only be for new hires or would this be for?
No, this would be for everybody. So it's the same, it's just, I mean, during COVID, you required, I, I assume that this was in here, that you required people to be vaccinated. So it's the same idea, even if they were current employees, that we can require, we're reserving our, the right to require appropriate vaccinations.
As, as, not fact, I don't believe we actually required, we gave them the option of getting their vaccine or being tested.
Yeah, being tested every.
Oh, interesting. Well, that's not what the handbook said.
I'm just telling you what happened.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Any objection to having that option in there? Okay.
Okay. The next one, um, is specific to bereavement leave. Um, I, so we, we have a certain number of days' time off for bereavement leave. I suggested, there's an ambiguity in here whether those have to be consecutive days. Companies these days are allowing, um, uh, whatever total you have, not to have to be used consecutively because, you know, you may have a, a funeral, you know, in a day or two, but you often then have to, you know, you have another elderly parent. You have to make arrangements for them to be taken care of, or you have to take care of the bank accounts or the estate or whatever it might be. So I, um, put in the comment, um, that I, and then we discussed it in, in, um, with Maggie too, to make sure that this would work with her, to allow, um, two, up to two days of non-consecutive bereavement leave to take care of those other kinds of things, uh, provided that they were taken within six weeks of the date of death with as much notice as practical and subject adequate staffing. So they have to go to Maggie to ask for the days off to, you know.
Okay, objections to that change? All right.
Is, um, is bereavement, uh, defined as to like?
Who it covers?
Who it covers?
Yes, and that's the other part of the bereavement leave that I have to raise. Alan, um, asked the question about whether to include grandparents or, or not within the bereavement leave of immediate family. Um, again, my recommendation would be as a good employer, um, to include grandparent. Most companies do include grandparents as, as immediate family. Um, I don't, so Alan had raised that question and I, my view is we should include grandparent. We do have a provision that talks about parent being, you know, an actual biological parent, someone who stands in as, who sometimes can be the grandparent, um, in certain families. But I think it, you should just include the grandparent anyway.
Why don't you read the entire clause there, so?
Well, it's just, and literally adding the word grandparent as in the definition of immediate family.
Andrew is asking if we, so what, what is our current definition?
Oh, okay, uh, let me find that. Um.
Says spouse, child, parent's sibling with grandparent crossed out.
Okay, oh, we're, okay. Anybody have objections to putting grandparent back in there? All in bereavement leave for grandparent. Okay.
Okay. Um, I think dogs should be in.
I just lost a cat, so I, I'm with you there. Uh, 4.4, so this, I thought this was, oh, there's, this is within workplace safety and accidents. We provide for what we call post-accident testing, um, drug, drug and alcohol testing. Um, uh, specifically if somebody's using a borough vehicle, they get, they're in an accident, they're required to go for, for testing. Um, and, um, what we don't say is what's the consequence if they get a confirmed positive? Um, and what a confirm, confirmed positive is a term of art in the drug testing world. So the process for drug testing is you get tested. You may have a positive, but you may have a prescription that explains the positive. So that you have the right to take that to a medical review officer, have that reviewed. Medical review officer can say, okay, you know, you tested positive for this, but I see the prescription, so that's fine. I will report that as a negative. So if it actually gets reported as a negative, even if the person tested positive for the disease. So a confirmed positive is a term of art that means that it is a positive. They also do what's called split samples. So typically you have the right to get your sample taken. They test positive. If the person wants to challenge it, they, they will test a second sample. Make sure that somehow the first sample wasn't somehow corrupted. So confirmed positive means that the person, you know, tested positive for drugs or alcohol, didn't have a rationale for why they came out positive. And if they elected to have the split sample test, they'll just test second sample, test a positive too. And then we, and what's missing in this thing is it doesn't say what happens if you test positive. We don't, we don't have the disciplinary, the final sentence, which should be, you know, if you, if testing confirms, if you end up with a testing, if testing results in a confirmed positive, you'll be subject to discipline up to including termination. It's not even in there. And my question for, for our panel was, should it be automatic termination or should it be discretionary? And that's a policy.
I have a question. What if you have a substance, say like medical marijuana, that is state, um, legal, but federal not?
So that's the passive, right? Um, you should not, remember, this is only happening when you're driving. So if you're under the influence of marijuana, when you're driving a borough vehicle, that is still a problem.
Okay.
Problems. Should be.
Fair enough.
Now, are you including any alcohol or is there, is it, it's suggested that you're over the?
The legal limit.
You're over the legal limit in this case. Okay. Cause I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't necessarily want to punish someone for being under the legal.
Right, right. So the question is whether you want to, I originally was proposing that said, will result in termination. Uh, Jim and Michael questioned that, said, you know, that seems a lack of discretion. The reason why some companies say will is because, again, we're talking about driving a vehicle. It typically helps with your insurance to make it mandatory, you know? If you're able to tell your insurance carrier, yeah, we have a zero tolerance policy for driving under the influence, right? Um, that helps and also obviously from a, um, what's the word, uh, scatting late in the night? Um, you know, uh, from a, you know, if we're trying to encourage non, non-bad behavior, you know, from a determined perspective, you want it to be shallow. But I, I didn't feel strongly about that. If you guys want to make it more discretionary, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Maggie, do you have a preference for language?
Uh, we discussed it at FNA. Um, we were actually going to ask if, if a solicitor has any recommendation. Um, you know, what Mike said about insurance companies actually preferring the stronger language, uh, was, was fairly persuasive to me. So I'm inclined to lean towards shallow. Um, but I don't know, John, do you have any thoughts?
I think shallow would be more objective and easier to, to administer.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of a reasonable excuse. What excuse being?
Driving somebody to the hospital?
Yeah.
So you're drinking up yet? Are you very good? I, I can't.
You know, we want to encourage people, if there's any debt, you like, take a cab home. If you're otherwise have a right to it.
I mean, and we can, council has the ability to override all this stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is, this is going, this is going borough, working hours as well.
Right, and remember it's driving a borough, it's specifically in context of driving a borough vehicle. It's not, right.
Okay, I, I think we're, uh, consensus is to go with the shallow.
Okay, uh, almost done. Um, there was just some odd, I don't know if any of you could address this. There was this odd reference to something in 4.12 about a local directory. And I didn't know whether that came from somewhere. I think Alan maybe just lifted, actually, it wasn't Alan's language. So it's funny about the EOC, again, the process for filing a discrimination charge. And it said something about the nearest office can be found in your local directory. Does anybody know what they're talking about? I mean, I'm literally thinking that this is like from, from the phone book. So I just changed it to online unless somebody told me that it came, it meant something, like we have a directory in the office. Um, and then the last one was the smoking policy, which, um, Alan, the very end, apparently in 2013, the folks on council then adopted a no nicotine policy for any of our employees.
2023.
Or 2023, sorry. Was this?
Yeah, that was the borough manager's initiative. I think council was just following suit, but, uh.
And so Alan took it out and said he didn't think that it was enforceable. I, some states have made off, off, uh, sight nicotine use not enforceable. Um, but I don't believe Pennsylvania is one of them unless you tell me otherwise.
This is a.
We will not hire anybody who smokes. That was like basically the effective. It will be the policy that we want.
Use on.
Yeah, well, that was included too.
Yeah, that's still there.
Health insurance.
Yeah, that, well, that's what I was going to say. I assumed that it was to bring your health insurance down.
Correct.
So Alan took it out. I didn't know whether from a, I mean, given that you just adopted this in January of 2023, I assumed you did it for a reason. So, and I didn't know, understand why Alan just assumed that it was not enforceable.
I think we should keep it in. And I don't know, are you the smoking police? But, yeah, I, I think it is.
It's already in there that they can't smoke on borough property, so.
I think that should stay in. Is it smoking or is it nicotine? Vaping or smoking?
It says smoking or vaping are, this is the way it originated. Smoking or vaping are not allowed at any time on or in borough-owned property, including vehicles. As of the January 1st, 2023, the borough will not hire any individual who uses any form of nicotine product with the exception of nicotine patches. And then Alan removed that and I questioned.
So if someone is, um, trying to quit smoking, that's your nicotine gum.
That's why they had the hat.
It'd be like the past.
Yeah.
I don't think we're getting any weeds there, but.
Yeah, the idea is we don't want to hire active smokers because it does have a, we're small enough that it will affect our insurance.
So we won't hire them if someone picks it up while they're here? Do we fire them? Like, what does it mean?
They're smoking in the office, I mean, I.
Oh, yeah, well, that's the point that says hire.
Right, right, right. We're not gonna.
We'll try to be a low-stress workplace. Um, Maggie, what are your thoughts here?
I don't want to lose out on a great candidate because they happen to smoke. Um, yes, the health insurance rates are substantially higher for smokers than non-smokers. Um, but also it, it, it's a matter of policing and, and, uh, I don't know. I'm not inclined to turn away a potential great candidate because of this reason. Um, you know, where health insurance rates go up when people have children. So we're not telling people not to have children. So I think it's, I think it's something that I want to be able to ensure that we hire the right people and their smoking habits shouldn't play into their employment eligibility. So I don't think that we should have that in.
I will say in many interviews, sadly over the last eight years, we've never asked someone, do you smoke? So I kind of feel like.
That is not a question that I've ever asked anybody in one of you.
So.
So I, I only had raised it because I assumed you guys had a reason who were here.
It was at the request of the borough manager. Similarly, I'm willing to see to the current borough manager.
Good, okay. So we'll leave that like.
Because it gets a little slippery because like what happens if their spouse who's covered by our medical policy smokes?
Right, exactly.
And that we don't have any control.
Well, yeah, but it affects your rate.
Yeah.
So that's the.
All right, so we're leaving the language about no smoking or vaping on borough property or inside. I mean, I think that's a public health issue.
So that.
At least smoking, vaping, whatever.
So with the.
So come into that interview with that cigarette now, though. No, we'll turn it away.
And not on borough property. Um, so I think, I think the way we can approve this is to say with those edits and amendments and with the edit, the edits that are in there, you're approving already. And then these five items, as we've discussed them, I guess, subject to maybe my putting that language in. And how, how do we want to logistically handle this? You want me to put the language in?
I think since, yes, I think since, um, we've discussed and it sounds like council's in agreement with the, with the recommendation. So like, if you want to take the next step then to incorporate that and provide a clean document, we can review that to make sure that that's consistent with everything that was agreed to and that will be adopted as our formal policy.
Does anybody have any other issues they want to bring up that have not been discussed at this time?
Do we want to ask how much is our health insurance going to go up if we change this language?
I think it just depends on who we hire. I don't think that they're going to change.
They have to fill out a form, a health form.
Yeah, so if, on, on the form, like when you sign up for your health insurance, you, you say, I'm a smoker, non-smoker, and that's what the rates are set. So the rates are already set for everybody who's currently employed based on whatever their status is.
So I don't think it's illegal to ask somebody if they smoke. It's, it's not protected class. So we can ask and it's eight after the nine.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I'm not hearing any other concerns about the employee handbook. So, uh, let us vote to, uh, approve the updates to the employee handbook, uh, with changes, um, based on our discussion that will be made by Mike. All right? Okay, so we're, we're voting on what's in there with the changes that we discussed that Mike will make. All those in favor? opposed? Okay. EV charger rate update. Uh, I move that our council approve the rate change to all borough-owned EV chargers to 32 cents per kilowatt hour. Is there a second?
One second. I already got it.
Okay. Heard some of this discussion, uh, Maggie, you want?
Sure, I'll, I'll give a quick recap. So at FNA, we discussed the, the rate that, uh, we're recommending of the increase. Um, so currently we charge 15 cents per kilowatt hour for our EV chargers. We do have six chargers. Um, so to, to caveat the costs, um, I wasn't able to specifically identify the PGO bill that's for one of the chargers because I believe that it's actually lumped in with, um, another. electricity thing with a, a street light. So it's hard to kind of parse it out. So that data is removed, but if we average out, so based on, so this is all based on Q1 data for twenty twenty five. The, the five chargers for whom we have dedicated PICO bills range anywhere from like one thousand to eleven hundred. The municipal lot is the exception because it's used more frequently by our police vehicles, so that's kind of the outlier. So we're kind of so if we assume that there's a one thousand dollar or so charge for the sixth one, that's kind of what we're going with. So if we take those numbers into, into account, so these are the actual bills that we pay plus the assumed thousand dollars for that sixth, sixth charger station. We're looking at a total PICO cost of about seventy-two hundred dollars for, for one quarter. This is January of February, March of twenty twenty five. Based on the, the revenue that we received from flow minus their management fee, our net revenue was only thirty-five hundred dollars, which represents a net loss of thirty-seven hundred dollars. So that's thirty-seven hundred dollars out of the general fund that we're paying for electricity that's being used by EV charger users. That's at the fifteen cents per kilowatt hour. So that means that we're not only losing the money for the actual energy, any, any money that we spend on maintenance, repair, administration, bookkeeping, the whole nine yards to administer the EV chargers is also being borne entirely by the general fund. Um, so I ran the numbers to take a look at what, what our revenues would look like at twenty-five cents per kilowatt hour, thirty cents per kilowatt hour, and thirty-two cents per kilowatt hour. We're still negative just on energy charges alone, based on the twenty-five cent per kilowatt hour. We do come out a little bit ahead at the thirty cent per kilowatt hour, so we'll be looking at about a three hundred dollar revenue there. But again, if rates go up in the summer, which we expect they will, just energy rates, and if we expect our energy rates to go up next year, which again, we expect we will because we just signed the new IGS contract, which does represent an increase in energy costs. That three hundred dollars is going to go away instantly. So that's why I'm recommending thirty-two cents per kilowatt hour. Really, truly, if we want to, if we want to be revenue neutral, it might want to be more, but at this time, what that's looking at is, is approximately a nine hundred dollar revenue, and that will go towards maintenance costs, so time, labor, materials to administer or maintain the facilities. So we're making very, very little revenue. We expect the annual maintenance is actually somewhere around twenty-four hundred dollars. So we're not even really breaking even there, so we're still somewhat subsidizing. But what we would like to do is to continue to monitor this, to actually see again, our energy usage and then our maintenance fees and try to parse that out to see if we need to change that rate even further in the future as we monitor increases to energy prices. So we believe that thirty-two cents per kilowatt hour, not only is it right on par with what the state average is and what local areas are charging, this is going to ensure that we are not losing any money, that we are essentially net revenue or revenue neutral, I should say, on the energy cost and making a little bit extra to cover our administrative costs.
It's really not revenue.
It's not actually revenue.
We're not making money off of this by any stretch.
It's, it's all going towards paying. And, and if you look at the actual original ordinance, it says that the cost shall be set at a rate to cover all of the costs plus some to essentially pay for the cost of installation. So the cost of installation was tens of thousands of dollars, some of which was covered by some grants and rebates. But, but we, we will, we will never actually, it will take us a very, 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 very long time to actually come out ahead if we're charging this amount. So it's, it's not revenue. But it is essentially just being funneled back into maintaining the system. And at least we're not going to be moving money on it.
Have, have you figured out the cost of the, or the, the, oh, the cost enforcement, enforcement? Yeah, is that all included?
Uh, no, I mean, we, we did not have the ability to take a full deep dive. I mean, that's something that we can run like a full financial because we could take Paul's time, we could take Jeff's time, we could take my time and Kathleen's time doing bookkeeping. So we really don't get all of that.
We, we do get tickets. I mean, you know, Paul's part of it is that he gets tickets.
Gets tickets, okay. He's going to be revenue neutral.
So that's, that's where we came up with the, the annual maintenance. So we were estimating about four hundred dollars per charging station for annual maintenance, which is twenty-four hundred dollars. Again, we're looking at nine hundred. So we cover our actual energy cost plus nine hundred dollars, but if we're estimating about twenty-four hundred dollars for annual maintenance, it's not revenue. We're still not even making up what we're spending on it. And that twenty-four hundred dollars would include Paul's time, Jeff's time, staff time to maintain.
So would thirty-five cents an hour bring us closer to revenue neutral?
It would. I didn't run those numbers, but it would. I mean, if we figure the increase from thirty to thirty-two gave us an increase of about six hundred dollars, we'd be looking at fifteen hundred dollars, which would be, you know, just under half of what we're budgeting for annual maintenance. So again, I mean, we'd have to be in the forty cents if we're actually going to be truly making it. And then at that point, we're a little bit higher than, than what the averages are in the area.
But thirty-five would still be above average?
It would, yes. Yeah, so the average, I think it was thirty-four point five cents per kilowatt hour is, is the average in Pennsylvania.
We're right there.
So we'd be right there.
So, so why are we writing something into an ordinance that fixes the price when we know the prices of, of energy are about to change?
We don't have a fixed price in the ordinance. The, the fee schedule does have the, have the, the rate. So we'd have to update the fee schedule.
So not a big deal?
Like that, so it's not a big deal. It's not actually codified in the ordinance. We don't have to do an ordinance amendment, but we do need to pass a resolution to update the fee schedule, but we also have another. So, so we can pass, we can pass the motion now and then we just have to update the fee schedule so that can happen.
But I guess what I'm suggesting is somehow we tie it to some, you know, metric rather than.
Well, we're, no, the fee schedule has to have a number in it. We can't just say market rate or something.
Okay. That's the question.
But we could, we, we would have to reexamine it like every year. I mean, I, Maggie's recommendation is thirty-two at this time. I would prefer to leave it at that and try to, you know, we can, we can reevaluate at the end of the year or something and see if the costs aren't, you know, or see how close it is. Because it's also going to change the usage. I mean, if we, if we double the prices, there's going to be fewer users, so that's going to change the, make the, that's going to change the numbers if there's fewer users.
And this is, so this is also
Because some of those are fixed costs.
These are winter month usages. So I didn't, I didn't run this analysis over all twenty twenty four to see how that changes during the different seasons, if people use their chargers more or less in warmer weather versus colder weather. But again, the EAC had done their analysis and they came up with for twenty twenty four, it was just over eighteen cents per kilowatt hour is going to be what got us to to neutral. But at the same time, again, they're, they're missing that whole PICO bill of one whole charger. So the eighteen cents number that they recommended, when I went back through and looked at all of the data, I realized that that was actually inaccurate because they're missing an entire charger's worth of PICO bills that would factor into it.
Okay, so they're one-sixth.
Because they were, because they were averaging the cost of everything. It's
Got it. Cross five, that's it.
Also looking at the, the usage trends for like twenty twenty four, it looks like the usage has gone up by forty-one percent. So it does seem like it can absorb some, like some increase in the price without, like, you know, just kind of wiping it out. I'm also interested to see what Joe Tiscano might have to say. I don't know, he hasn't even had to put me on the spot, but.
Well, I'm going to say on the, the analysis the EAC did based on the PICO bills from September, November last year, which we sent in earlier this year. Uh, we were missing that one PICO bill, but we weren't. We're, we're looking at it by charger, just per kilowatt, per kilowatt usage. Now, because PICO chargers are sort of raised depending on the full amount of electricity that's used at each meter, the little chargers are a little bit different. So some of them, they went from, uh, let's see, the North, North one was seventeen cents per kilowatt hour. Conway, twenty cents, seventeen cents, twenty-two cents. So when we came up with that average figure of eighteen cents per kilowatt hour, but they were averages over the five. So we didn't have the data from that one, but it wasn't just that, we still weren't making an average over the five. That's just taking into account the electricity usage and just taking into account the amount that's based on the actual usage, sort of stuff that build per kilowatt, per kilowatt hour. There is a twenty-four dollar customer charge that PICO adds to each of the monthly bills for each news. So I don't have the information on the maintenance charges that Maggie is talking about, so we didn't back to that. We were just looking at the electricity usage and that comes out to eighteen cents per kilowatt hour based on the date that we had the total in November. I think that maybe we talked with you about more recent PICO bill.
Yeah, because I had sent
Nineteen and a half cents.
I had sent the most recent bills to Lee, so that was for March and April, which then ended up at like nineteen point five cents. So we did see an increase in the per kilowatt hour just between last year and this year. So, so yes, and, and thank you for the, the spreadsheet. That was very helpful. So I just built off of that. So it's the eighteen cents per kilowatt hour, but that doesn't include any of the, so that's why I'm saying it was, it's, it's a low ball estimate only because it doesn't take into account the additional charges that we have, the maintenance fees and, and those sorts of things. So that's just energy costs alone. But it's already gone up that we've seen in the first quarter, you know, at least one, one point five cents, and that's, that's the average. So we did see some of them, some of the charging stations averaging more in the twenty to twenty-two cents per kilowatt hour for those charging stations, which is offset by some of the other charging stations that get less usage. And so those kilowatt hours, those kilowatt, yeah, the cents per kilowatt hour's average then is lower, which brought the whole average down.
Be paying more at the more used stations.
Right, so the more heavily used, so the one hundred Conway station, if we look at those, if we look at hundred, one hundred Conway, we're looking at twenty, twenty-three cents per kilowatt hour averaging versus the this is, the one twenty-five Marion Avenue was down to like thirteen cents per kilowatt hour just based on average usage. So that one is used less than the one here in, in Conway. So we do see that discrepancy. So some of the stations kind of inherently like offset the other stations.
When we did that, our eighteen cents, we were just averaging up with those five.
Right, right, correct.
So Maggie, it seems like the minimum would be thirty-two.
That's, that's what it looks like, yeah.
Oh, sorry. How, how difficult is it? Because again, we know this is going to go up in the summer. How difficult is it for us to just resolve, let's say we'd say thirty-two now, and we want to go up to thirty-five or thirty-six? Is that?
It's, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's easy. We just go into our system and then we just open up each station and we just change what it charges.
We'd have to pass a resolution.
Yeah, so And it's a resolution, it's not an ordinance, so there's no expenditure of funds to make this happen. It's just a matter of, you have to wait for council, you all have to authorize, and then we will just go into the system the next day and go boop, 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 and change the numbers. That's the official sound that it makes.
How do consumers know? Is it on the app? How much is this per hour? I mean, how does consumer, like, there's no big sum, I'd say.
They'd still get charged the fifteen cents.
Okay.
We're talking about what we get charged for, for what they're using.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They get charged the new rate.
Yeah, the new rate, but you're, you're asking about
Yeah, well, how, how do they know that? How do they know that it's going on? Like you pass by a gas station, there's big sums.
It'll be listed on the app.
On the app, okay, okay.
I think that the charging stations themselves show a little screen.
And, and to put it into context, yes, we're doubling the rate, but when you actually look at what people charge, if you're only plugged in for an hour or two,
Seventeen cents.
It's like eighty cents, and now it's going to go up.
A normal car is, can hold like forty-eight kilowatts. So theoretically, if they're charging from zero to a hundred percent, you know, which you'd never do, like the maximum they're paying now would be like seven dollars and twenty cents. And it would go up to like two gallons.
Amazing, yeah.
But that's if you're there all day, you know, all night. But if you're only plugged in for one hour, it's between like one dollar and two nineteen.
Yeah. I think we're spending a lot of time on three cents.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'm comfortable.
The recommendation from the committee was thirty-two cents. Do people want to?
I'm comfortable with thirty-two cents. I think that's aligned with also the PA average for, um, I have looked at, PA average is thirty-four point five, and the national average is thirty-six.
Joe, do you have a feeling about thirty-five cents versus thirty-two?
Both numbers seem somewhat high to me. I don't have the data on the maintenance costs, so I don't, I can't speak to that. Regarding the state averages, I, I also don't have that data in front of me either, but keep in mind, sometimes when you look at those, you're looking at fast chargers too, in addition to our level two chargers. And often there's a premium on those for the convenience of charging really quickly. So I don't, I don't have the data in front of me to answer that.
Well, I just looked up, it's like, it's forty to fifty cents for the, the level three chargers.
So, but that means that then the average for non-level three chargers would be twenty cents.
Ultimately, we need to recoup our costs here. So I think if we, if we set it and it's higher and we're taking in too much money, we can lower it. I mean, we have the actual PICO bills and we have the flow statements, so we should be able to reconcile those over the next few months and, and see what the impact of this is. And if we're, if we're still not taking in enough to cover just the direct PICO costs, then
I think we should set it at our current cost, though, instead of like setting it at the cost that we expected to go up to.
Yeah, so like I said, recommendation is thirty-two cents. I would propose we do that and you know, reevaluate at the end of the year when we do our fee schedule anyway. So the, the, the fee schedule, or if it, if it
If it jumps up in the middle of the summer.
If something, if something is clearly out of whack, I think that it sounds like the office has the tools to track this now. So if something is way out of whack, we should, we should go.
Let me just give you real fast, I'm just doing the numbers as we were speaking to give us what thirty-five cents would give us here. So we'd be looking at about seventeen hundred dollars then above the base electrical rate, assuming that electricity doesn't go up. So of course, these, these numbers for like the overages to cover maintenance costs and maintenance fees is assuming that the energy rates won't go up. We know that they will be going up, so then that seventeen hundred dollars might turn into fifteen hundred dollars or eleven hundred dollars. So that'll, you know, give us more cushion to cover our energy costs plus have some money to cover the maintenance fees. And that would be the thirty-five cents per hour.
Is that, is that total, including all six chargers, or is that per charger for three months?
This is, uh, so this is, I'm sorry, so this is quarterly. So this is all chargers for one single quarter.
So seventeen, so like seven thousand a year.
So if we're saying, so I said seventeen hundred, so seventeen hundred per quarter, and we're saying twenty-four hundred for the annual, so it's a little bit higher than what we need. I'm sorry, I realized that I was saying these based on quarters and then we were talking annual maintenance and I wasn't doing
So again, I, I think that, given that the recommendation was thirty-two cents and the modeling was originally done with that, I would, I would say we go with that. You can revisit it later.
If it's around nine hundred per quarter, times four, four, it's thirty-six hundred, which is
It's going to change because people are going to lower their consumption of it. So I, I think we have to see how this turns out.
They have no other choice.
You're going to save two cents to drive eighteen miles?
Yeah.
People do it for real gas.
I know.
Uh, I, I would, I would like to take a vote here, and so let's take a vote to set it to thirty-two cents as recommended by the committee. All those in favor? Okay. I, I realize for those users out there, this is going to be significant, but uh, we were never intending this as a, as a subsidy. We were intending to recoup our costs, so we have to proceed along those lines. Okay. Uh, speaking of EV chargers, borough EV charger.
I move that Borough Council approve the removal of the existing fuel storage tank and purchase and purchase, I think and installation.
Purchase and installation.
And installation.
Speaker, purchase, or we started again? Sorry. Stop. I move that Borough Council approve the removal of the existing fuel storage tank and purchase and installation of a level two EV charger within the borough's public works secure barn area. Second.
So, so is, is this amount So, so is, is this amount concluding removing the tank or this is just?
It's two different numbers. You've got, both numbers are in the packet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
They're both about, they're both pretty close, right? It's like 5,000 each. Jeff, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, so following the fuel tank leak that we experienced last year, you know, the Borough reevaluated its needs on, you know, what fuel to keep on site here. You know, council was kind enough to grant us a budget amendment, you know, late last fall, which afforded us to get a transfer tank for one of our trucks to keep our winter operations up and running. And from there, you know, we evaluated after speaking with chief, you know, on what he needs, you know, their ever-growing fleet of EVs. And, you know, it's happened a handful of times where they cannot get a patrol vehicle charged. So, you know, I offer up, you know, a corner of space in our yard. You know, it's a safe and secure spot for them to plug in if they're doing paperwork at night, you know, they can swing in and charge for an hour and then it's great again. And, you know, plus it just solves us getting rid of that tank as well. So the charger that would go in is a level two. It is, it is a higher power two though, so it's more powerful than our flow chargers that we have here. And it will be installed by Keith Morton, who installed all the other chargers that we have here. There's enough mechanical power from our breaker room here, so no trenching, no excavation work. Now the wiring will just be run down the wall of our shop wall. So it would be right there, it wouldn't be accessible for kids to try to tug on, and with safety issues with the exposed wiring.
Well, the yard is also closed off, so.
And with the, the addition of the new vehicle as of today, we have another vehicle that needs to be built.
Seems very symbolic to replace the diesel tank. Any other questions or comments? And we did apply for a grant for this, but we were sadly turned down, so we have to, have to do this on our own resources. All right. Any other discussion? Let's vote to remove the fuel tank and install the EV charger for Borough use. All those in favor? Okay, boards and commissions policy.
Me again. I move that Borough Council approve the Norworth Borough appointment policy as presented, although we have some edits to that too, so I think.
Well, let's begin to, let's start by a discussion, so let's get a second for discussion.
Second.
Okay. So we have the boards and appointments policy that's in there.
Yeah.
And you have some other changes you want to suggest.
Right. Well, okay, so let me just give an overview of this as it was, as it is now. So the idea for this appointments policy was to introduce a timeline and a calendar of appointments, you know, of establishing deadlines, and then to establish a consideration period where we could all have access to these, to the names of people applying for positions and have some kind of consideration, whether they be individual consideration or group consideration. And essentially bring just qualified and agreed upon names to the appointments agenda or to the council agenda by the time of appointment. So we've spent through a couple revisions and it's mostly being solved by discussing names in the executive session.
In the F and A executive session, right? Or is it council?
No, I think we would have a council executive session to sort of put the names on the table and see whether, you know, who has support for.
I don't think that's an executive session topic.
You're not going to be taking a vote during that time on, on these names, but you're certainly welcome to say that here are the names that are open for these, these positions.
We can, okay, as an information item, I suppose. How is that?
That I had.
How is that an executive question?
You're going to be vetoed.
Because you're not deliberating on who you want to choose.
I mean, at this point, if you're just saying here are the people that are open.
You're going to be deliberating on the ones you don't want to choose, for sure. That's the whole reason.
I'm sorry?
You're going to be saying not, not these two.
Well, if you're going to be deliberating on who you want, again, there's also the, it depends on the role too. I mean, if we're dealing with someone that's going to be more of an official appointment as to a, you know, more volunteer board, if we're talking about civil service commission or a EAC or planning commission zoning appointment, I think that would fall under the official of the Borough or person. But if you're dealing with more just a pure volunteer board.
That sounds a little odd, so.
Arguably it would apply, but I, my understanding of this board has always wanted to do that in the open.
Yeah, I think we might be overthinking this. But I definitely don't think moving into an executive session to discuss appointments is going to help when folks say you're not transparent.
I mean, I agree that it's a little awkward to discuss candidates in an open meeting, but, you know, don't, don't, don't put your name forward if you're not willing to be discussed. I don't know how you can, because you get, what's the purpose of this? If you put five people in and say, okay, well, we'll eliminate those two, but that's three for.
The real purpose is to make sure that council people have access to the names and are able to consider them and determine whether these people have support to move forward and be appointed. You know, I mean, the way we've been doing it for the year, last year and a half at least is, I've seen is that the names just show up on the agenda a day or two and then we don't, we don't really know who they, you know.
Let's just say we have a month or a week or an agenda, you know, of time. I think the intention is, Jim, if I knew you well, is to spare people from their feelings getting hurt or an awkward position. But it's going to sound like, hey, behind closed doors, you're figuring out who to appoint. I do think it's, it's reasonable to say, hey, everyone should, should have a week or two to see who's put their name forward, to be able to reach out independently. I'm much more comfortable with.
And that's, part of this is process. So like we do build in these timelines for process to allow everybody to make the phone call, which is not deliberation, right? I want to pick up the phone and talk to Doug, as I did.
You're totally able to speak to him.
Absolutely.
All right, in your capacity.
Can I suggest we just withdraw this and retool it again, like take another month or two with it? Because I, I think this is.
Okay. I have a, I do have a couple of comments on the other side. Does anybody have, have other comments they want to make besides that?
So there, there was just one technical thing further down that, so civil service has specific rules about alternates and how they can participate, not participate. I'll be able, I'll work with Jim to tinker with that language if we're going to rework it anyway. But basically, alternates can't just jump in on a one M at one step in the process and participate under civil service. If they start at the beginning of the process for evaluating candidates, they have to go all the way through. So they can't just punch it like the last one to vote.
Right, so what was the sense of, you say that the subject to the, what the ordinance allows or what the.
Yeah, so you had another, another passage about Borough and clearly cannot be a member of an order commission.
No, except required.
Yeah, I think, and there, the HARB requires us to have the zoning officer as a member, so it should be said unless it is required by the ordinance. Unless required by, unless required by ordinance, I would say. And then just the other thought was the, the intention is that we will make our appointments in December, right? That the, the vacancies appear as of December 31st, so we should make our appointments at the December business meeting of council, right? Just to get the timing right.
That's a vacancy.
Just want to make sure that that's the, that's clear in the, the language, that the expectation will be that we will vote in December.
So that's the only time we would vote on this?
No, we could vote, you know, because vacancies come open and sometimes there are empty spots, but we, we should be trying to sort out all of the known, you know, rotations on and off of, you know, people whose terms are up. That's as of December 31st, so we shouldn't be making our appointments to people who are leaving after their term has expired at the December meeting.
I know it's a little hard to read with all the crossouts and edits in the packet, but that is covered in here.
Okay.
It starts November, they have to put in by December.
Yeah. Do you like the idea that there be like a period of, you know, we know the names and we have a week or two.
Yes, that does seem helpful. That does seem helpful. All right. Okay. I just don't think it should be an executive session.
Okay.
All right.
Do we want more time with it? Because I, I drafted this so that it would coincide with the deadline that we set for ourselves in order to include things for the packets. So packets go out the Friday before the meetings. And then it's a, it's a, what do I say, the Thursday, the second Thursday to coincide. But if you want more time with it.
I would appreciate more time, I think, just because, you know, sometimes reaching out to the appropriate like board to get their feedback, like that, that takes time and.
Yeah. I think it should be almost like December 1st rather than the second Thursday of December. Seems awfully late to be taking applications.
We could always put something on the agenda and if we say, hey, you know what, we haven't had a chance to really connect, can we defer this to the next meeting? We could always do that, couldn't we?
Yeah, but the idea to have people in place by January 1st on the term.
Yeah, because otherwise you have.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we'll be appointing, yeah.
Otherwise you might not have forums, you know, it makes a mess of it. All right, why don't we, so the, the recommendation was, Jim asked to have this removed from the agenda and come back this year.
Yeah, so we'll table this, we'll incorporate the changes and then we'll have it back before you and Jim.
Okay, I'll take a motion to table this.
Yeah.
Motion to table.
Okay, is there a second? All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of tabling? Okay. Motion to table, I read, voting to.
Yeah. Did it right.
Thank you, Jim, for your work.
Yeah, thanks. Sorry about that.
I enjoy it.
Uh, let's move on to Ten High, which is the time extension for Ten High.
I move that Borough Council approves a time extension with Panoni Association from June 30th, 2027 to July 24th, 2029 for construction and consultation services to the Norworth Avenue Bridge replacement.
Is there a second?
Second.
So with this item, there was really, you know, due to the extended, or not the extended, but the additional, additional scope and the unexpected items that came up, you know, during this whole process, you know, we, we realized that, that the, you know, construction is going to, as we know, it's going to take probably around four years as, as we estimate. You know, our, our contract that Panoni has with the Borough is set to expire 2027, so we would like to continue our, our services through the construction phase, which is why we're asking for that extension into 2029.
Well, so as, as I said before, we don't really know that, this is a date that you estimated, but.
Yes.
Pretty soon we're going to know like, you know, what the person who actually has to do the work is, is going to say about that.
Yeah. So. It could be, you know, it could be soon in the 2029, you know, obviously we'd be.
We could always change. I don't know why we, I mean, I don't know why we would extend it so far now if we don't even know the date, but.
Your recommendation would be to wait till August, like once we have the.
Yeah, because it's not going to, it's like 2027 and we have a little time before the current contract runs out, right?
Yeah, I mean, we already extended it to 2027 relatively recently. I mean, that was, was that last year that we extended it to 2027?
I'm sure.
At your request, so.
I mean, I'm not opposed to extending it.
Yeah.
To the end of the contract, I just don't.
We don't know when the end of the contract is? Maybe you need to wait until.
I don't know, maybe, maybe it's later, I don't know.
What's the big deal about, you know, passing this now, it can always get reset. I mean, right now.
You're entering a contract with somebody, so.
Is, is, is there a problem if we wait until August when we're going to have our presentation from the contractor?
Absolutely not. Now, there won't be any problems if we, if we choose to not vote on this today.
I mean, it was good that it came up because we realized it's something we have to deal with, you know, at some point. It's not going to be done by July 24th, June 30th to 2027. Okay, so like, I'll admit that.
However, I will note that that was Panoni's estimate last year. That is why we, that is why we extended it out till 2027.
I understand.
Can you just put to the completion of the bridge? Why do you have to give a date?
That's a good question.
Could you tie it to a?
Tie it to the completion date and then it's a services kind, we don't want to have, we don't want to have a indeterminate timeline for a contract.
We have to budget for it.
We have to budget for it, so it just kind of gives us a hard deadline. I will say, I was looking back in the files and I found a letter dated August 13th, 2012 that extended the Panoni contract until the ripe old date of July 5th, 2013. So we've been extending these contracts because this project has continued to take so long for over 10 years. But what no one else could say before that we can finally say is that we now have an awarded bid for a contractor. So we are much further along than anybody else has ever gotten to date, so kudos to you.
And I will say, I was on the council that approved the 2012.
You really want those scissors.
A bit of a weak position.
Okay, so we're phones off?
I mean, the, the motion on the table is to, is this extension, do, does council want to grant this extension or does council want to wait until August? Hear more from the contractor and from, I believe we'll have Jesse at that meeting as well.
Yes.
Well, hopefully in August.
I mean, it's, it's a matter of, this was just something that was flagged by, by our Penn dot liaison who noted that the project deadline was, was ending in 2027 contract with Panoni. But now that we actually have more of a concrete schedule, obviously we're going to know more about that schedule come August, but the fact that we now have something on the books, we have, we have the funding, we have the bid, so we now have more to hang our hat on in terms of a timeline that just to go ahead and, and take care of it now with these projects, the, the earlier you can kind of catch things and take care of them, the better it is. And, and you know, I went in today and did all of the, the updating to the contract contacts for the reporting for the recommendation, which still had Bill Martin's name on it. So, you know, these are things that kind of, thank goodness we have access to all the emails that I even got the email. So it's better just to take care of these things now until we go to, you know, report something and realize that we're missing some sort of documentation. So it was just flagged and it was something that was being asked to, to be taken care of. Certainly we can wait, but we have the timeline and so we know the project is going to go past the 2027 date. So if the project ends earlier, then we end the contract earlier. But I fully respect if you want more time to kind of digest what the.
I mean, is there a cost to ending the contract? I mean, for the Borough.
I mean, so the only, the only cost of the extension is that there may, there may be some additional costs that the Borough will, will need to take on, but the bulk of this is all being reimbursed. So if anything, there's a 5% contribution. So if services exceed beyond what the contracted rate was and there needs to be a supplement provided, then the Borough might be on the hook for 5% of that supplement. But that's, that's, that's a future scenario that we don't know is actually going to happen at this time.
But I think my main point is that 2029 seems like a long time from now and maybe that's the right date. But I don't think we should just be like saying, well, that's fine, no problem, we're going to get it done by 2029, we're good. We'd like to push back a little bit and have, you know, this, this contractor, you know, sharpen their pencil and, you know, try to get us a better date. And I just feel like by approving this, we're sort of saying, yeah, yeah, we're, we're all good with it, you know, it'll be great, we'll be, we'll, we'll all be thrilled when we go out there, you know, on July 24th, 2029, walk over the bridge for the first time.
Well, just so, this is the contract with just Panoni, this is, okay, not the contractor.
I understand.
But you're, you're sending a message of saying, we, we hope that this can be done a little sooner than.
That's, that's my point.
Shortening the leash.
You don't have to agree with me, that's, that's.
I mean, I do agree with all of you, given that the estimate last year was 2027.
Yeah.
I am, I am unhappy that the estimate right now is 2029. I mean, it's great that we're, that we're, that we're passing this and progress is being made, but I am disturbed at the, at the changes in timeline coming from Panoni, you know, after not a lot of time, so, uh, anyway. I'm sure you've heard this from me already, but. I'm sorry if you've heard this from me already, but.
So it's the idea, we wait till August.
Yeah, let's, 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 let's.
A schedule we can look at.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So I will, I will take a motion to table this.
Sound it.
Okay, is there a second? Any further discussion? All right, we're going to table this extension until we have further discussion, presumably in August, about the timeline. All right, all those in favor of tabling this? Okay, motion is tabled. All right, that concludes our consideration items. We have no discussion items. Reports are in packets, committee reports. F and A, we did a lot of, you know, we did just a very. We, in addition to that, we are continuing our boards and commissions review, the Human Relations Commission, which we didn't do tonight, but it's ongoing. Shigri is in the works as well. There is, so there is a, we're also getting reports on the recodification of the zoning ordinance from Planning Commission, from Todd Bresi. He did provide a written report, which I haven't even seen, but it's in here somewhere that we can provide it, right? We can circle like that if anyone's interested. Is it in the F and A packet, though? It is, okay, so I'll, I'll look for it there, and you can, too. And there's a lot we didn't have time to get to tonight, but the website progress seems to be going well. Yeah, oh, and there's going to be, we want to, the Borough managers proposing that we have a boards and commissions open house later this year that would double as Sunshine Act presentation for them. We don't really have a date for that yet, but.
No, you, you are welcome to take the lead on scheduling.
Okay.
If you want to, if you would like.
Okay.
And Jim just did, so I did that when I.
Yeah.
Yeah, I ride people with pastries.
Pastries worked well, yeah. It worked well before we got to town.
And then we just were able to ask you to, can you show up? And we handled the rest.
Yes, and it's great because the Office of Open Records has this really great PowerPoint presentation. So John can be there for moral support and legal guidance, and we can kind of go through the rundown. It's helpful just to kind of refresh everyone's memories about what, what rules and responsibilities are, what the Sunshine Act allows and doesn't allow, just to keep everybody up to speed on things and make sure that we're all following the same protocols. Because there's a number of boards and commissions and a number of volunteers. And I do recognize that these are all volunteers in the community who have busy lives and families. And it's so great that they spend their time volunteering and doing all this extra work and doing the analysis and everything like that. So we just want to have appreciation, but also provide a little bit of education to make sure that we're not running afoul of any Sunshine Act violations.
We did this once before.
Yeah.
And we had pretty good turnout.
Yep, I think it was the pastries.
But it was, it was.
I hate for the pastries.
Samantha was the manager one year, last time.
Yeah.
So it's been a couple of years, so.
I'm not suggesting you're going to do it. I'm saying it has to be well.
It's a good idea.
Yes.
Proceed. That's it for, thank you. I don't know if you guys want to consider changing your meeting time or something? I think I've been having trouble getting through your agendas.
I had.
Should think about that.
I had suggested that to my colleagues just because it's hard to go from six to seven.
Yeah, well, especially because you got a hard stop with this meeting.
That can be a good thing. Having a hard stop can be a good thing.
Yeah, can be a good one.
Well, one way or another, you know, you got to make sure you get through your agendas. One meeting at seven, 5:30.
No.
Maybe stay at six, but see what you can do. Because you really, you really have to get through the, the agenda if possible. All right, infrastructure?
We did not meet, but we will be meeting in two weeks, whenever it can happen.
We got the seat?
We did not meet in May, but our next meeting is Friday, June 13th. Also, the Police Advisory Committee did provide a draft, I mean, a memo regarding communication. So I will circulate that with the committee. Also, we're working on the traffic calming and safety policy, and that's in progress. And I do want to give a quick update with Parks and Rec. They had a follow up after the, the movie night, which was like a huge success. And they had over 100 people who came out to the movie. And now they're working on plans for an environmental education, a series of environmental education events at Hungroo Park. Oh, and.
I had, yeah, I was going to say on this, okay.
Sure, go ahead, about the planting at Hungroo Park. So on Tuesday, there'll, there'll be a wildflower planting with Peter and Nancy Brew.
And Michelle Depp-Waller and Linda Pitt and the Garden Club. And I'm talking with the Girl Scout troop. It's going to help with watering this summer. I did volunteer and help with watering over the summer. You can actually just take a bucket from the creek. So there's a tree that's being donated in Peter's name. And Peter and Nancy have donated a really significant kind of lot. And Jeff made this happen for sure. I mean, this throws more on Public Works' plate. So I said, we will rally to help water, to get it established. So hopefully, the Girl Scout troops, we can kind of help coordinate with Michelle and do environmental ed. But over the summer, if not, I said I would coordinate volunteerism. So if folks are home, I think it will be such fun, even kid activity, because you can speak from.
Do we have a time for the event then, on Tuesday?
I don't remember.
No, I think Jeff was, I can let you know. So Peter and Nancy's daughter will be in from Europe. So that's why they were trying to hope for that date.
Correct.
So I can let you know, Gene, and let others know.
Let's get it on the, on the Borough.
Yeah, we can put something out on social media.
Yeah, I think we should definitely wait till it's established and see what Peter and Nancy want to do and Michelle, so.
Correct.
Also, they're doing the planning for the Norbert Food Truck Festival. So that will be in Sabine Park, and that will be on September 20th. That's like getting five food trucks in there. They do want to include a beer and wine food truck. So I know that might take some extra steps through. So they will coordinate with Chief John String on that and see what other forms and other requirements they might have to meet for that. And, I think. Yeah, that was it.
All right. Thank you. New business, old business? Comments for the good of council?
Yes, just want to remind everybody, in a week and a half, we have the Memorial Day Parade. And thank you to John Nardi and, and Judy Giuliani and Ken Grobinsky for their hard work in maintaining this, this wonderful tradition in the Borough. Lineup is at 9:30. The parade will be followed by a ceremony at the War Memorial. All are encouraged to come and pay respect and pay tribute to those who have fought.
I will also note the Borough offices will be closed next Tuesday for the primary. This building is used as a voting location. So please go out and exercise your right to vote.
That's right. I'm being civil in front of the public.
There will be a, an event in support of the Paley-Thorndale line, in support of its funding. It'll be next Wednesday, the 21st at 10:30 a.m. And I think it's on the south side of the station. So there'll be several local elected officials speaking. Andrea and I will both be speaking. Mary Jo, Amanda Capaletti will be there, among others. Just making the point of how important this station is to our community and how vital it is to keep funding for the railroad line. So please be out there and press, hopefully, and.
I definitely want to shout out, I, I think Michael should speak on council's behalf. I mean, you and Andrea can talk some, but he has written a resolution. He came up with the webpage. He emailed every elected official. You are the most knowledgeable, a tremendous public speaker. So I think at some point, I would say, I would, I think you should represent us.
Paley-Thorndale.com.
I totally appreciate that. But I, I think it's totally appropriate for the, for council president and the mayor as the, as the leadership of council to.
Well, you are by far the expert, and I would give a shout out that I would.
Yeah, Michael has done yeoman's work in that.
Yeah.
I totally appreciate it. I've also heard there's, there's some buzz in the area about folks out in the advocate world that they're trying to coordinate folks to go down to the Septa meeting on the 19th. It's during the workday, so I don't know how many folks can make it, but I'll circulate information about that.
Down Harrisburg?
It's, it's down at 1234 Market, the 7th.
One of the times is at 5 o'clock.
One of the five, I know that there, there was, some of the coordination was trying to get folks to go in the morning. But yeah, I think there are, there are two times in the day. So there may, there is actually an evening opportunity as well. I understand.
So if you want to go talk to, or go have your voice heard at Septa, it's also an option. All right, any other comments for the good of council? Okay, so we don't have an executive session listed. I don't, do we have anything that's come up? And we have, because there's nothing urgent, so. We will not have an executive session. I will take a motion to adjourn. All right, seconded, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning? All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.